Welcome everyone to our November seventeenth board meeting. It is all Zoom, so bear with us as we get through this. And what I'm going to ask everybody to do after the roll call is please mute yourself because it gets really confusing during during the pledge of allegiance. Just I'll I'll stay on and you can listen to me and you can all recite it, but with that many voices saying things, it gets really nasty, so.
Oh, I don't know how to, I don't know how to mute. How do I do that?
Well, maybe maybe Matt can do that for you. Can you do that for Matt?
Look on the bottom left of your screen, Jan. If if you it might not show up unless you scroll your mouse down there.
If you're using the iPad, it's at the top.
Okay.
I think she's got a computer.
Okay, I see it. Let me practice, do it and see if it worked.
Yep. Got it. Okay, very good. All right. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Lambright.
Here.
Commissioner Bunting. Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
All right. Okay. After we've called the roll, it's time to have the invocation and the pledge, and I would ask everybody if you just mute yourselves so that we don't get a lot of confusion. Most gracious, humbly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. We just pray, Father, through this time of COVID that you would pay extra special blessings upon all of our armed forces across the seas and at home. Our first responders, Father, who are are working in the hospitals every day and going out and trying to save our lives, and we just appreciate all those, and we ask you to be with this meeting tonight so that we could do the best that we could do for the folks of Grashit County. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. That being said, agenda. Anything else needs to be added to the agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith on yet? Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Okay. Do we have any public comment?
George Tracy here. I've had a text from Sam, but he is on his way, so. So he's aware, he's on his way.
What, on his way where?
Yeah.
This computer maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, very good. All right, we don't have any public comment. Um, right now, we will have a public hearing, and we will have to go into a public hearing mode here with the motion. This is to discuss the State Street renovation project in Alma. As you recall, the last meeting, we set the public hearing, and tonight we will have to have the public hearing in that regard. We will have several people, I assume, speaking. Um, I know we have Jim Wheeler, Casey's on the line, so there'll be several people, so. But first off, we need to make them have a motion to go into public hearing.
I would move that we go into the public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the brownfield redevelopment authority proposal.
I'll second it.
Moved and supported. Do we have any other discussion? Having said that, ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith, is he on yet? Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. All right, we're in the meeting, um, and I would ask someone from Greater Grashit or whoever is going to speak to this to go ahead.
Okay, well, George, why don't I take over and start with this? Jim Wheeler.
Yep.
I hope he's gonna let me turn my boy. There we go. Um, in any case, what what we have is a proposal from Gemini Capital, which is Ryan Smith, who to talk about having a redevelopment or a brownfield opportunity in downtown Alma. For those of you don't know it, that Greater Grashit runs the brownfield authority for the county, hence that's why we're here presenting this tonight. Uh, the the primary function behind this brownfield, which is a little different than what we see sometimes, is it's technically the building's functionally obsolescent and obsolete. That's actually the same type of proposal that we had when we took a look at the ZFS project where it was a failed alcohol plant, became a bean processing plant, so a lot of the stuff out there was not usable for them, so hence it becomes functionally obsolescent, the building. In this case, you have a big old building, I think that used to actually be the JCPenney store downtown. It's now going to become apartments on the upper story and a boutique hotel on the first floor, which will consist of nine rooms, which again is a very, well, that's why we said boutique, it's not what you normally see in hotel sizes, but given the some of the demands that we've seen now in the Alma market, especially with the college, Masonic Home Hospital and some other places, there has been a need for people to want to stay over that don't want to travel to Mount Pleasant for a hotel and lodging. Some of our local lodging is now gone by the wayside, so there's even higher demand right now for it. Two things, both it's a functional obsolescence, so a piece of it's being used in order to create the rooms, and the other side of it is, is they went in there and found significant amount of asbestos that needed to be removed, and again, not uncommon in older buildings, but in order to get into it and make it workable for this type of a scenario, the asbestos needed to be removed. So it's a, so the the total plan size-wise for the whole project that that they're that it qualifies for is just about three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So that's what they would be asking to be reimbursed as far as the Gemini Capital will pay that amount of money and then be reimbursed through a to a tax to what's called a TIF back from from that. The the property has also been classified as an Oprah, so there's an obsolete properties, a tax abatement that's involved with it too, um, which will be sort of layered into this, but sort of the long and short of that is the state doesn't recognize the Oprah designation, just the locals do. So by having the brownfield here, the the state actually, which and it's all taxpayer dollars, don't kid me wrong, but the state will be reimbursing about two-thirds of this, about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and the local portion of it will be a little over a hundred, about a hundred and three thousand. But it's so it's it's one of those, and and the part about a brownfield that everybody just has to know is that it's it's not a gain to the developer, it's just bringing it back so that it it's comparable that if you were building something or something else as a standalone, that this helps reimburse them for costs that they have to go through in order to bring a building back up to to speed, and then in this case, remove asbestos also. So kind of dominate conversation, but
No much, fine.
If anybody has any questions or comments, but the city, we had a round, we had a meeting with the city commission and very much supportive of it. The brownfield authorities met on it and supportive of it, so this is the next step. Uh, is the public hearing and then the approval in the countywide, and then the final step is it has to go to the MSF, which is the Michigan Strategic Fund, which is the ones that can sign off, because basically the state captures the school tax. And that has to be approved at the state, so that would, but in order to go to that, all of the other pieces, the brownfield authority, the city and the county have to approve it first.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comment on that? Okay. Do we have any commissioners that want to make a comment on that?
I would just say, you know, this is, we've done a bunch of these, and you know, it's just an excellent program. I always tell people, you know, Grashit County, we're like experts, you know, thanks to Greater Grashit Development at, you know, turning what would otherwise be undevelopable prof, you know, parcels and properties into something that, you know, provides a gooder service and then eventually gets back on the tax rolls that, you know, full of greater value than what it was before. And so, you know, and and I know the people, the 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 city in Alma is very excited about the the project and you know, we keep hearing that there's not, you know, enough housing and there's not enough hotel space, so so this is a a good project.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, hey, I'm here now.
Hi, Sam.
Hey, how are you doing? I I had mentioned at the brownfield meeting, some of us have got a real job, George. Uh, I had mentioned at the brownfield meeting that, um, we have one of these projects, it's it's not a brownfield development project, but we have, there's a hotel in St. John's where I have a business and downtown on Main Street, and I'm amazed how well they do. And they seem to be full all the time, and I tried to uh, make a deal out when I was trying to hire some funeral doctors to to stay with them and rent by month from them, and they they're just sold out. I mean, they're packed, and so I think it's a real good thing for Alma, great use of that building.
Okay. Um, Matt, do we have any public that want to make a comment on that? It was a public meeting.
Nobody has raised their hand. I do see one person joined in by telephone. I'm not exactly sure who that is, but if anybody would like to make public comment, I welcome them to unmute themselves, and the person on the phone, they can unmute themselves by dialing star six.
Okay. I hear noises, but I don't know what it pertains to.
I guess if there's no other comments, I'd move that we close the hearing.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported that we closed the public hearing. Any other discussion?
I missed who supported that.
I did, Chuck.
Okay. We're already to call the roll then?
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. All right, very good. We've closed the public hearing, and now I have to consider ex- adopting the resolution for the brownfield.
I make a motion, we adopt the resolution. That's what you need?
Yep.
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there any other discussion? When the clerk is ready, she may call the roll.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Jim, for all your help. Appreciate it.
Thanks, George. Appreciate the opportunity to present it.
Very, very good. All right, next on the agenda is consideration of consent calendar board minutes, communication recommendations from committees.
Will we adapt the consent calendar?
Support.
Moved and supported. Do we have any discussion? When you're ready, Angie, call the roll. Angie, oh, I don't hear you. You're muted, Angie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Alrighty. We're down to the administrators' report. Tracy?
Well, hey, everybody. Of course, in recent weeks, I've been doing these meetings from my office, and Chuck is giving me a wonderful idea that perhaps in the next few months, I'll just do these meetings from my car. Looks pretty good there. You're trying to set her you. I really, what I want to spend some time on tonight for my administrators' report is to uh, do a quick overview of what's going on in this building as it relates to COVID nineteen. I've got to tell you, the bulk of my time gets spent on various things related to this, and um, because there's a fair amount of interest and activity uh, on this in our building, it seemed appropriate that I would spend some time tonight. I have a few slides that I will go to right now, and I think that you should be seeing slides. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. All right, so just by very way of very quick review, uh, significant dates include, um, the date of the governor's order, uh, sending us all home, and then our return to work on the fifteenth of June. Um, of course, a lot of controversy about that. On the second of October, the Michigan Supreme Court declared that the governor exceeded her authority under the Governor's Emergency Powers Act. Uh, so her executive orders really ended up having no effect. Between October fourteenth and November fifteenth, MIOSHA, the Michigan Occupational Safety and Health Administration, and the Department of Health and Human Services issued some orders geared toward safety in the workplace. MIOSHA, and of course, it's MIOSHA that is charged with overseeing um, our activities in maintaining a a safe and healthy workplace for our employees. So the October fourteenth order covered the list of things that you see here. Uh, in early June, I put in front of you, because it fell under the governor's executive order, um, a preparation and response plan for our response to COVID, what we were going to do uh, to protect our our workers. Uh, once the executive orders went away, uh, this was picked up by the MIOSHA order, and indeed, we we have that plan. And otherwise, it's just everything else that we've been doing. We've to find people that are sick and to encourage them to stay away. We do our health screening. Uh, we're doing remote work where possible, a health screening and so forth. You you can see the list there. Um, on October twenty ninth, Health and Human Services stepped in and addressed capacity limits at gatherings, no more than a hundred, no more than fifty, no more than twenty-five. Also, um, imposed the face mask requirements and reinforced contact tracing requirements, or we reimpose those um, as requirements in our state. And then on the fifteenth, just on Sunday, DHHS uh, issued another order that limited capacity in gatherings further. Interestingly, it required remote learning for high schools and colleges. Uh, education at other levels is to be left to local officials. Interestingly, sports are okay if there is enhanced testing done of folks who are participating. Uh, face masks still required and contact tracing. And contact tracing, of course, is anyone who tests positive or is ill with COVID nineteen, uh, there must be an examination or a list made or consideration of everyone who came into contact with that period, with that individual for a period of fifteen minutes or or more. Uh, those people must be notified and they must quarantine or or isolate, so. Uh, so what we have done in the workplace, uh, there's really nothing new since our return on the fifteenth of June. We've got the hand sanitized units. We provided masks to folks, all our employees, and we're required that they wear them. We're doing enhanced cleaning in high-touch areas, and we're using the chemicals and products that are recommended by the CDC. Uh, we're doing the health screening at the entryway. We're trying to limit traffic in and out of our offices. Uh, and we're encouraging actually that our interaction with one another here in the building be done by email and telephone. Also encouraging members of the public to receive service from our offices by email and telephone, uh, to limit folks in and out of the building and to limit, um, contact by our staff with members of the public. So why have we done all this? Why have we done all this? Well, we are hearing now, of course, about uh, the increase of COVID cases, the surge all over the country. And so too are we seeing this in Grashit County. I just picked up our numbers as of October sixth. I want I want you to see what's happened here in just a six-week period from the sixth of October to the sixteenth of November. Prior to October sixth, we're just kind of humming along. Our case levels were pretty low. Our deaths fortunately were very low. Um, and here you can see that we began on October sixth to inch up uh, from the sixth to the eighth, so just in two days, gained eleven cases. Uh, then in just about five more days, we gained a bunch. Uh, in two days, we gained, um, you know, fifteen, and this is where we really began to spike. So from the fifteenth of October to the twenty-second, so that's less than a week, uh, we we gained thirty-eight cases, and then we were off to the races. From the twenty-second of October to the second of November, we were at five hundred and seventy-two. And now from the second of November to the sixteenth of November, uh, just two weeks, we have increased from the five hundred and seventy-two to the one thousand thirty-seven, so we're really off to the races now. Fortunately, our deaths have remained fairly stable. We are at eighteen deaths, uh, here in Grashit County. Um, everyone regrettable, but fortunately, we're not adding to that count or haven't added dramatically during this period. Um, the counties to our south and our west are also spiking. McComb County has twelve hundred cases, twelve hundred four, so they have more than we do um, by, you know, a hundred and thirty-something. Clinton County, um, one thousand nine hundred ninety cases, so almost two thousand cases in Clinton County, so. Um, everybody's spiking and just going, um, a little bit. We're really having some trouble controlling this. Closer to home and and here in the courthouse, I'm going to say that we kept cases out of our courthouse for four months. Uh, but then our luck ran out, and to date, we have had four of our staff, our peers, our colleagues, we know have tested positive. And what what's a little bit disturbing, and it emphasizes the importance of our health screening at the entryway. One person came to work, knew he didn't feel well, but he thought it was that what he was experiencing was leftover from a previous illness. No, it was COVID. Another person came into the workplace thinking, oh, I just have a cold. Well, no, it was COVID. Um, and a third person came in thinking it was just, you know, just a headache, just a headache. Well, no, it was COVID, so it has been very important that people submit to this health screening and not self-diagnose. We don't ask people at the entryway, do you have COVID? We ask about these symptoms, and, uh, these folks, I think, probably did some self-diagnosis, minimized what they were experiencing, and so they came into the building. In addition to illness, and we hate to think of any person, uh, being ill, um, but the the really the larger impact on our operation is that, and this, we do this contact tracing. For each person who tests positive, we need to determine who that person had contact with in our building, in the workplace for fifteen minutes or more, and that's fifteen minutes or more all at once, or fifteen minutes total uh, over a period of, uh, the twenty-four hours. So we have to identify all of those people, and it can be very difficult for some folks to remember, but we do the best we can. Then we have to send all those folks away and tell them you have to quarantine for two weeks out of of the courthouse. Out, you know, just away from work, or in the case of attorneys, you have to stay out of the building and you can't come, uh, to this building to practice. Um, today, we have nine hundred and twenty-five hours of lost productivity. Um, that's by those that have been ill, those that have been quarantined. That does also include, though, our parents who have had to stay home with their children um, when schools have been closed or the children are ill or have had close contact, so. Uh, what this does not count, though, is that the many hours that folks have worked from, uh, home who have, um, uh, we've given them laptops, they've gone home, we've been satisfied that there is work that they can do uh, from home. But the folks who really cannot, um, who are left behind, your coworkers, uh, they're left to pick up those phone calls, the extra traffic at the counters, the extra dad entry, so uh, this really does have, um, a negative effect on on everyone in the workplace. What I am seeing, you know, we did a lot, we did a lot of upfront training, putting measures into place, telling people what they needed to know. But th- this is what I continue to see, and that is some folks are coming to work ill. I cited the three cases that did end up being COVID, but we, you know, we have people coming to work, um. Oh, we had one person come to work who had a cough, and this was a different cough. It was a new cough. Um, and she got through the health screening, uh, when a coworker pointed out to her, geez, you have a cough. It makes me very uncomfortable that you are here. She said, yes, but, um, the deputies knew it and they didn't stop me. Um, that's unfortunate because we we need to be doing more self-regulating. Don't put the deputies in that position. So it's very, very frustrating when we see people, and I went through the first three earlier. But it's very frustrating when we see people either self-diagnosing, uh, dismissing symptoms that they are having, or just thinking that it's, uh, it is for someone else to take a determination about whether they should be at work. I can tell you that I did, uh, do a version of this presentation with department heads this afternoon, uh, emphasizing all of this, uh, reminding everyone about what, because we know what to do, and we just have to remind everyone to do what we know to do. Um, and then department heads have been tasked with holding a meeting with their staff to review all of these things also. Additional observations, uh, some things that we talked about, you know, don't walk in and out of offices freely, even if you've got the mask on. Uh, the very beginning of this, in June, we talked about, um, rather than coming in to drop off a piece of paper, scan that thing in and send it by email, or drop it in the mailbox that's down the hallway. To talk with one another, uh, use the telephone or the email, and encourage your customers to get the service they need by telephone or email. Uh, this, I think, we've pretty much stopped doing entirely communicating to folks that we really prefer to provide service, uh, by telephone or email. Uh, again, asking folks internally, drop documents in the department mailbox or scan and send. Also, uh, at the very beginning, I had left it to, um, certainly the elected officials, but also department heads. You make the decision about whether you want your staff to be wearing masks at their desks. And, um, and that was fine. Folks talked about it, made made their decisions. Um, I think that, though, when we're in very tight spaces, and we do have, I don't know, a handful of offices where staff are sitting very closely together, we're really going to have to. People, by and large, are not wearing masks in those tight spaces, and we're going to have to reevaluate that. Um, what we really need to do in response to all of this, we have a few months of experience now. We've really got to make sure that people are fully disclosing on those health screening documents. Uh, I recently, there are a few additional symptoms that the CDC has added to the list of symptoms that may indicate COVID. I've added those symptoms to the health screening documents. I'm also requiring now that employees sign their health screening documents, um, uh, each day when they, uh, first report to work. Uh, folks need to self, self-assess and take some responsibility. If you have a symptom, you you need to decide if you ought to be coming in into work or not. Uh, follow, we we know what to do, so follow the exist, existing safety protocols, wash hands, wear a mask, wear it properly, limit your contacts and so forth. Um, and, you know, we can all forget these things. I shared a story about how I walked out of my office, went outside and came back, and I had forgotten to grab a mask, and you know, this can happen to all of us. And this can happen to all of us. So we can all play a role, just kind of gently reminding one another when we forget about one of these things. And what is very concerning, and this has been a big issue here, is we as employers, we cannot instruct people about what they can or cannot do when they are not in the workplace. So we've just got to encourage our employees to make good decisions. We've had folks that have traveled when the, our health officials were telling us, no travel's not a good idea. Sitting in cars with people without masks for many hours, getting from one destination to another. People who have gone to weddings, been in close contact, funerals, the super spreader events. And we just need to limit contact. Oh, there was one, one individual that went to, well, I had a couple of people that had to quarantine because they had close contact with friends. Day or two later, friend reports, oh, I'm positive. So then they needed to quarantine. And, you know, maybe this was the year that we just couldn't get together with friends to watch the Michigan, Michigan football game. These are the things we need to do. These are the things that we need to remind one another about. So we've had, we've had positive cases here. The greater impact to us is the contact tracing. And of course, Jeff and I, you know, our lives have just been kind of handed over to this COVID process consulting with folks and just keeping up with things. So that's where we are. I had asked folks today about any ideas they might have about things that we can do, additional things we could do. We do have some folks now, trying to get back to that. We do have folks that are implementing kind of staff alternating, having half the staff work remotely and the other half be in the office and then switch so that there's less contact. Doing those sorts of things to ensure that, you know, just to try to keep all of the staff from getting ill at once. This is a particular concern of the sheriff's, of course. He's had some incidents of close calls. And it wouldn't take much for the sheriff, who I know is listening and did participate in our meeting this afternoon, would not take much for him to just not be able to cover the bases. I think Angie is going to begin rotating her staff in and out. My staff have been authorized to work remotely a day or two or three a week as it works for them. Now, we do have one person who is working entirely remotely to the extent she could work because she is at home with children because the schools closed. So that's what's going on here. I think that, well, you know, there's chatter and talk, but that's where things are. The order continues and the advice continues to be in place and has throughout that any office work that can be done remotely ought to be done remotely. Now, you know, we are here serving the public and doing the people's work. So we have to take that message and just kind of consider how we can meet our responsibility to serve the public while, while also keeping everyone safe. But so I very much welcome your observations, your suggestions, understanding that the overall objective, the objective is to keep our staff safe, to keep members of the public safe while also providing service. I'll take certainly your suggestions.
I did have a question, Tracy. I'm just wondering, I was on a call this week with the, this week or last week? I think it was last week with the prison. And they have some out there that have the virus. When you give, when we get this number of how many people have, that do have it in Gratchit County, does that include the prison or it doesn't include the prison?
It would include the prison, but our case counts include those that live in Gratchit County. So if any of those folks live in another county, it's going to go to the case count of that particular county.
Oh, okay. That's interesting. Okay. I was just wondering.
Sure. Well, my question to you of any additional suggestions that you have or concerns or just ideas about how we continue our service while keeping everyone safe. It's an open question. So please, as you have ideas, I'll very much appreciate your call or your email. And with that, George, I guess I will call that the end of my administrator's report.
All right.
Tracy, I do have one other thing I'd like to mention. I do have free time and if there's anything I can do to help at the courthouse, I'd be glad to come over and volunteer in any way that I can. If it was to run things back and forth to, I mean, I could wear a mask. I even got a shield for over my head that I bought just recently from Sam's Club. But I'd be glad to help in any way I can throughout the county. And that would be any place where they might need me.
I appreciate that, Jan, and I'll keep that in mind and pass that along as I hear of others that are short resources. Thank you.
I would even help at the sheriff's office if they want me to drive a car around. Just kidding there.
Put her in the jail. Put her in the jail, Sheriff.
All righty.
Well, I just have a real quick comment. I think we do a pretty good job of getting people in and out of the courthouse. I think it frustrates some people sometimes. I know it's our business that we're probably to the courthouse about every day, every other day. And the staff works real well to drop our stuff off in that little entryway so we don't have to enter. And it's, hopefully our staff can, as you say, get up to speed a little bit more about what they're doing because they have pretty access. They come there every day. And a few of them could really kind of spoil the whole thing and shut the courthouse down if we don't have enough employees there. So I think we're doing a good job of the outside world coming in there. And, you know, we just need to stress how important it is to keep that place as safe as we can.
That's right. Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, I agree also with you, Sam.
All righty. Okay. Very good. Going on now to commissioners' reports. Chuck?
I don't have anything, George.
All right. Thank you. Tim?
Me neither.
Sam?
Yeah, we had a couple of three meetings. We, I was to a meeting last night in North Shade and to, yeah, North Shade and then last week to New Haven. Windmills, I'm amazed how fast these things are going up. They're firing them up. They're, they've got them running, GTE or. It's another company who's built a windmill.
Oh, Invenergy?
No, no, it's the actual company that built the road. They're coming in and they're gonna, they're gonna hook them all up. Yeah, they're gonna start testing them. They think they'll be online at the end of, end of December. They'll be pumping power. And I'm just amazed how fast this thing turned around. I was talking to a couple of people from consumers last night about it. And he said it worked real well with consumers, some of the plants they built here. The other people built them and then they come in and took them over and then had to figure this all out. These guys kind of went right through the build with them. And I just amazed how quick this thing is up and running and they're going to be producing power. The other thing in Fulton Township, I was to a meeting and we're going to get this communications tower. They may have started digging here this week. I haven't been over by there. But they think they'll have this communications tower up about the 10th of December as far as the actual structure. And then they have the equipment all bought or purchased or brought in or whatever. They think they'll have that thing running for the, I think it's 800 megahertz police radio fire and all that for down in the southern part of the county. That'll be up and running hopefully by the end of December. So that's coming right along.
Good. Very good. Jan?
Yes, I've had a few meetings. I had one of the meetings with Michigan Works, I believe that was last week. And we're restructuring, getting ready. Also, that's going to be coming in front of the board in 2021 to renew the contract. So we're going to be working on that. Also had a meeting with MMR. That was last week. Well, you know, I'm confused what week we are. They go by so quickly. That was last.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah, last Thursday. And that also, that was an interesting meeting. I'm going to get the minutes around and also send out our last meetings, which would have been four months ago to our clerk so she can get them out to all the commissioners for the next meeting. And then there was a lot that went on, so I'll probably be working on those minutes and getting back with Dan and Brett to help make sure that I've got all the right messages in there. I also had a meeting with the prison. It was online. That was kind of a short meeting, 15, 20 minutes, I believe. And it was basically to get a number of, that they do have cases. They have cases with the colon, with the, with the, or the virus. And that was kind of interesting. But what I thought was real interesting, interesting was that they talked about there was some outsiders flying in the, is it called drones? They go over the, you know, that fly around in, that somebody was trying to send phones in and send drugs into the prison. And so they were able to stop that. They're also asking that the, that we keep eye open if we see anybody suspicious that are, that are flying these around near the prison to let the prison know or 911. So, you know, just kind of not a whole lot. Just, I think the big issue is the virus and, and the concerns everywhere, not only here in our community, the state, but also in our prisons and hospitals. So that's about pretty much what I have to say today.
Thanks, Jan.
George, do you think to add on to mobile medical response meeting? You were there too.
Yep, I was there, but I think you've covered that. So we'll just go on. Consideration of new business, we've got Keegan. Going to be coming up here.
How's it going?
Good.
All right. So what I've got is a revised apportionment report and the inter local agreement for the designated assessor. So I guess I'll get the apportionment report out of the way first. So we have just a slight change in the apportionment report. Hamilton passed a millage on the third for road and bridges and fire and rescue. And that came out to an extra 2.25 mils. That's on page 65 in your packets. And so I've got that highlighted. And if anybody wants to go through the apportionment report again, I'm more than happy to do that. Or if you just want to stick to the changes, I'm completely fine with that as well.
Do we have any questions before we move on? Go ahead, Keegan.
All right. So. That is the only difference, the only addition to the.
Okay.
Yeah, Hamilton Township Millage.
Okay. Now, do we need to have action on that, Keegan?
Yep, it needs to be approved.
Okay.
Move approval of the revised or updated equalization report as presented.
Support. Apportionment report too. Sorry.
Apportionment report. I think that's what I said.
Okay, sorry.
I have a move and a support. Do we have any other discussion? When the clerk is ready.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes. All righty. And designated assessor?
Yep. So what I've got here is the inter local agreement for the designated assessor. So I just want to start off by kind of going over what the designated assessor is. Basically, so in 2018, Michigan passed the Public Act 660, or 660, property assessing reform. This act requires that each county have a designated assessor on file by the year 2021. So the designated assessor position is qualified individual who will step in as the assessor of record for any assessment unit that is deemed noncompliant by the state tax commission. And so for an order for an assessment unit to be deemed not compliant by the state, the following process has to. And please stop me or ask any questions as I'm going. I know I can go fast sometimes. So let me know if I need to slow down. So in order for an assessment unit to be deemed compliant, they first need to fail an AMR review that is an audit of minimum assessing requirements. These reviews are done every five years. Gratchit County had one done in 2019. So once that review is failed, the assessment unit needs to create a corrective action plan, basically a plan stating how they're going to get their assessment unit back on track. Once that plan's submitted, if the state accepts that, they move on to the following year. They're going to do basically a recheck on how that plan was put into action. If they, if they deem that plan was not followed, then that assessment unit is deemed not compliant. So it's kind of a couple of year process in order for that to happen. But at that point, when the unit is deemed not compliant, that they have three choices. They can either hire or contract with another assessor. They can allow the state tax commission to assume jurisdiction of the role or they can contract with a designated assessor that's on file. And basically with that, they only have two options. The state has said that they're going to make it too expensive to allow them to assume jurisdiction of the role. So basically their choices are hire another assessor or contract with a designated assessor. So this inter local agreement that I'm presenting, it has to be approved by you, the board, and the majority of the assessment units in the county. At the moment, we have, I believe it is approved by eight local units at the moment.
How many, how many units do we have to have?
So we've got 19 assessment units plus the county. So we need 11.
Okay.
Yep. And so I'm asking the board today to approve Kathy Roslin as the designated assessor for Gratchit County. And basically what Kathy did is she made a proposal for her plan as a designated assessor. And she's actually the only applicant that we received. Hi, Kathy.
I'd like to add, if I could, Keegan, that there was significant township involvement. Keegan ran, he did do solicitation, sought interest and others to submit a proposal. The townships were involved in the criteria, just every step of the way. So this is not something that's being done to them or over them that was significantly involved. Involvement. Once Keegan had Kathy Roslin's proposal, he sent it out to the townships to make sure that they had no objection to this individual as the selection. So again, I want to emphasize that piece, both so that you know that the townships were very much involved and also so that once again, you have an opportunity to hear what a great job Keegan is doing.
I appreciate it. All right. Kathy, do you want to make any comment?
No, I, Keegan covered everything. And there's plenty of information on this. So, you know, you can go to the state tax commission website and they offer all kinds of information on this. And what it boils down to is the assessing reform. It's a mandate. And I just, I feel it's my obligation to the county. I'm not asking for a retainer fee. I know a lot of assessors are requesting retainer fees. I don't feel the need to request any retainer fee for this.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Keegan or Kathy, could you tell me when this would kick in again? How would this work where she would have to come in place or how would this?
So basically, the designated assessor needs to be on file by 2021. But as the process goes for a unit to be deemed not compliant, I believe the earliest that can happen is 2023.
So when would Kathy, so Kathy would be the assessor? I mean, she would work or she would be if there was a problem with our assessors or?
Yeah. So basically Kathy would remain essentially on retainer in case a situation arises where the township needed an assessor.
And what would that situation? And what would that situation be, Keegan? I think he's asking, what would the circumstances be? To be activated.
Uh, so, the assessment unit needs to be deemed noncompliant by the state tax commission. And it's quite a process for them to be deemed noncompliant. They first have to fail an AMAR review, that's an audit of minimum assessing requirements. Once they fail that review, they need to create a corrective action plan to submit to the state. If the state accepts that plan, then the following year, they'll do basically a review of how that plan was put into action. And if they deem that plan was not put into action, then they're deemed noncompliant. So, at that point, the assessment unit can either hire a new assessor, or they can contract with the designated assessor.
I see, okay.
That unit pays, pays for the designated assessor or other assessor, is that correct, Keegan? That's not, the county does not foot the bill for that.
Yep, correct, and Kathy has her rates right on this agreement. And I've done a decent amount of looking at other counties' agreements, and her rates are pretty fair compared to a lot of them, so.
Right, everybody satisfied?
Yep.
Will entertain a motion to accept a designated assessor.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any other questions? When the clerk is ready?
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Thank you, Keegan, appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, I greatly appreciate it. I'm really excited about this, I think Kathy's going to be absolutely great for this position.
Yep, I do too.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Yep, bye bye. Okay, next on the agenda is, I believe, snow plowing.
Well, the snow has begun to fall, I walked home in it last night and I stared out my window at it today. We are ready to request your approval of snow plowing contracts. As usual, we sent out a request for quotes, we had three companies respond. Searls, with whom we've done service the last handful of years. Also, a new player for us, which is LawnScape, I think it's LawnScape. I just don't recall who the third was, or what the third was, but its rates were quite a bit higher. We would like to have two folks working for us this year, and the reasoning is this. If Searls, if Searls were to discontinue service. Or, you know, any, there'd be any kind of an issue there. We, we would like to have cultivated another vendor for this. We have no experience with this other company. And so, we, we thought we, and we offered to them handling just two of our lots. And it's those that are on opposite ends of the route. The animal shelter at one end and the health department at the other. Searls would continue to do the bulk of the work, which would be the jail parking lot. The courthouse handicap parking lot, which is essentially just the parking lot here at the main entry. And the courthouse church parking lot. Searls also would do the jail parking lot, plow and salt on, on the weekends. So, we'd like to just test LawnScape, see how they do for us. Always good to have another vendor available, so that we don't find ourselves at the short end of, of any situation. So, the request is for you to approve a contract with Searls. And the contract with LawnScape for snow plowing.
What's your pleasure?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Moved and supported, is there any other discussion? When the clerk's ready?
Commissioner Lambright.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have. Department of Veterans Affairs to fill a seat on the board, I'm thinking. And, is Sue explaining this, or just, we're just going to take it as is?
Well, I, I actually attended the meeting, the Veterans Committee meeting with this was being considered. They did have a resignation, they solicited interest in the community for this position. I believe they had five candidates or five applicants express interest. Was pretty surprising to them. They talked this through pretty thoroughly and arrived at the recommendation. Of this individual whose name I'm not able to.
Barbara.
Yes.
What's your last name?
Coming.
Regone.
This is.
Barbara what? I heard it. What's Barbara's last name?
Yeah, so Barbara Regone, very qualified. So, the, the Veterans Committee was uniform, unanimous in making the selection. Recommending her to this board.
Okay. What's your pleasure, folks?
Move that we appointed to the board.
Support. Alright, we moved that, or moved the sport that we appoint Barbara Regone to the Veterans Affairs Board. Any other questions? Very, no, no, when the clerk's ready.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes. Okay, it's that time of the meeting, it's not really on our agenda, but I know what time it is, it's time for the financial meeting. So, we're going to have to entertain a motion to suspend the, a regular board meeting and enter a finance committee meeting.
So moved.
Any other discussion? When the clerk is ready?
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes, alright, it's all yours, Tim.
Okay, take a look at your agenda, first up is the Financial Administrator's Report.
Oh, good evening, board. We've been very busily preparing for our audit that is coming up. Believe it or not, the auditors will be working remotely, possibly some onsite, starting next week. So, we have that to look forward to, and then they, that'll be their preliminary review. And they'll be back in the first week of January for, to, to wrap up. That's what we're busy preparing for now. So, you know, Becky Clark, that works with me, she's instrumental in getting all of this stuff put together on the expenditure side of it. And, well, there was touched on earlier, Kalen continues to do a great job finding. Materials that we need to put into the, the, the practices that Tracy touched on earlier related to COVID-nineteens. Staff are very, very busy. I'm going to run through the financial reports with you, I'll share them on your screen like I have before. First up is the county's cash balances. And you'll see the trend that we have going back from August of two thousand twenty, September and October. Between July and August, we see a significant jump here in, in cash balance. And what that tells me is that, in, in our general fund, and what that tells me is that. Our, our residents paid their taxes earlier this year than they did in the previous year. So, I would suspect that we're not going to see as, as much of a delinquent tax amount as we have in the past. But, i- it's following the trend of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen year. And that was also a year we, where we had a very small amount of delinquent tax. Does anybody have any questions related to the cash balances? So, the whole reason that I share the cash balance with you is because it is, it is a, it's a snapshot. Of the county's balance sheet, so you can see what assets they have. Now, moving on to the next item to present, the general fund revenues, expenditures and transfers. This is a new worksheet for you guys that I put together. And what this does is it basically gives you the Cliff Notes version of the operating statement for the county. So, now, on a monthly basis, what I will be presenting to you. Is basically the bal, the Cliff Notes of the balance sheet and the income statement for the county, which is our complete. Picture of our financials. And what you see here is, I went back and I grabbed all the historical data all the way back to October of two thousand and eighteen. The top line that we have are the revenues that we brought in for the month. The second line, transfers in and out. No, this is just for the general fund, so this would be transfers in from other funds to the general fund would be the second row. The third row, expenditures, out of the general fund, and the fourth row, the transfers out. A typical example of a transfer out would be. To the landfill fund to pay for some expenses at the landfill, or to the childcare fund. To pay for the county's percentage of what we pay for in the childcare. So, what you see when we total all of our revenues and expenditures. We either have a negative number or a positive number. Negative number, we're spending more money than we bring in in that particular month. A positive number, we're bringing in more money than we spend. And. The majority of the time, the only time we're going to run a positive number, running in the black, is going to be in September. That's because that is the month that we collect our general operating millage. And the general operating millage is the largest funding source for the general fund. So, you'll see, it, it just gives you an idea of the inflows and the outflows of, of the county. Does anybody have any questions related to the schedule? With no questions, and you can ask them at any time throughout this. I'm going to move on then to the October check dispersment report. For those checks that were for ten thousand dollars and above. I know that everybody is, is working remotely today, so I will scroll through this slowly. But if you have any questions related to the check report, feel free to let me know. I did not see anything out of the ordinary.
No, it looked pretty normal to me.
We're still at the end of, cleaning up the end of fiscal year twenty twenty. So, you're going to see a lot of legal advice coming in. Lawyers that are getting in their, their bills from earlier in the year. Nutrition equipment here, there was some additional grant money that was available for COA. So, they were able to go out and buy some things that they needed to improve their kitchens and their delivery systems. We have some bond payments here. When you see it going to different banks.
Chris, can I just ask you a quick question on, when you were just mentioning these lawyers getting their bills in? Does somebody approve those and say, yeah, this is right? I mean, do they send that to?
Absolutely, we have, we have a, a whole department now that the state funds, in the Indigent Defense Fund. And they, these bills run through them.
I see, so when you get them, they've already been jacked over and?
That's correct, somebody who knows what these people are doing are approving this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't want you to think you didn't know what you were doing, but.
Well, it would be, it would be impossible for me to know.
I mean, that's, yeah, it adds up.
It's like the bills out at the drain, the drain commission. I have, I rely on the drain commissioner to approve those. And if he doesn't approve them, I ask him to approve them, because he knows what's going on, on a daily basis there, I do not. I make sure they're accurate, I make sure that they're eligible, and I make sure that they're put in the correct place.
Okay.
And there were some, on the screen here, there were some that I removed some names from some of the legal bills. So, that's why there's some blank spots in this. Some of them were actually titled with names of juveniles that were represented, and I didn't put that one correct.
Hey, Chris?
He reported to you.
Yeah, Chris, I see there's only two attorneys. I, you, there used to be more attorneys that were involved in that?
We do have a lot more attorneys that participate in this. But they had gotten their bills into us sooner, so we didn't see them in this month's.
I see, okay. It's the timing of when they submit for payment.
Okay, so I'm going to switch over to the complete check register.
When you look at that one, Jan, you see that there's a bunch of the other attorneys that are part of the rotation there.
Yeah, I see them now. But, no, I was, I was surprised that there wasn't more in with, with the ones that, that, that we first saw there, Todd and. Oh, I can't think of where.
Catherine.
Yeah, I usually, I thought, I was surprised, because usually, like, I know, I know of a couple attorneys that kind of. Put theirs in like once a month, or at the end of a month, and I didn't see any of those, and with that. So, you're saying that some of those, I didn't check the dates, I should have. Anyway, it's okay, I just wanted to ask.
Well, the date would be the date they submitted the invoice to us, not the date of the service in this report that you see.
And I'm sort of, the, yeah.
The first report was checks that were over ten thousand dollars, so they had accumulated a lot of invoices. That then totaled over ten thousand dollars, which is why they were triggered in the first report.
Okay, I guess there are no questions on the checks besides that one? Okay, Chris, anything else you want to add?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, with that, why don't we move on to the treasurer's report? I think, there's Michelle.
Hello. I've provided you with the, the same three reports I always do. Nothing odd nor ordinary, typical month. Taxes being paid are a little slow right now, but that's normal with holidays coming up. People would rather buy Christmas presents than pay their taxes. Thursday, I'm going to have my second sale out in the parking lot of the courthouse. I'm not expecting a huge turnout, it's the second sale, I don't have very many properties left to offer. So, just a heads up there, if anybody's around and sees a bunch of people out in the parking lot, that's, that's what that is.
Michelle, the second sale, did they start at like a hundred dollars, or we just, we, we got a flat? We don't, we don't. We don't, we don't go back to the, don't we drop the price?
Yeah, I'm going to start out at $50.
$50, okay, I couldn't remember what it was, but I just know it no longer is that what they owe. It's just, you know, whatever we can get.
Yeah, we did, we just want to get them sold and back on the tax roll. But, yeah, just not a whole lot of interest in the sale this year, so.
Michelle, is there any homes that are for sale or just flame?
There is a vacant home in Wheeler that was a mortgage foreclosure. But we had a lot, people checked keys out and they said it's completely gutted, so it would be, it would be quite the project. But 50 bucks.
Well, yeah. What does that sell again? I might come to it.
Thursday at nine, out in the parking lot.
Okay, nine o'clock in the parking lot. Okay.
Is it listed on the treasurer's page, what's up for sale, Michelle, for the final sale?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Michelle? I just noticed that the investment report, you know, we still have a couple, we still have a couple investments that are earning more than 1%, but I also see that they're going to be expiring. So then we'll be, then we'll be back to, you know, one or less. It's just not that.
I know.
Good you got those ones when you did and locked those in, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other questions for the treasurer, thanks, Michelle. Any other business that anyone has or questions? And I don't think there's anybody waiting to make a public comment. I don't see anybody else except for the sheriff. Okay, with that, I'll then take a motion to return to the regular board meeting for the purpose of paying the bills.
Support.
Okay, motion by Smith, support by Murphy. Angie, whenever you can, call the roll.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambrecht.
Yes. Alright, that passes, and we're back to you, George.
Thank you very much. This actually has run fairly smooth for as many people are on Zoom, so. I'm happy to do that. One, one, one other note, I would plan on board to have another Zoom meeting the first. I think things aren't going to be changing much. If they do, I'll let you all know. But right now, I would plan on Zooming for their next board meeting. Okay. Is there anything, oh, public comments? Anybody wishing to make a public comment? Okay. Alright, there, we are done with our agenda, so that would.
George, I, I think the reason that this noise bothers you is those ear things you have on. Can you hear this?
Yeah, I can hear it. I can hear everything, Jan.
Okay.
If there isn't anything else, I'll call the meeting adjourned.
Okay.
Take care, everybody.
Okay, bye, everybody.
Bye, bye.
Come to visit if you'd like.